Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three New Bern Board of Alderman Meeting. The prayer tonight will be coordinated by Alderman Brinson.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to call up Mr. Brian Saunders, who is both my... He is my home group leader from Union Point Church on Trent Road.
Well, it's a pleasure to be here, a pleasure to be able to have this honor, and so let's open up with the word prayer. Well, Lord Jesus, you say that where two or three come together in thy name, there you are, and I'm sure there's at least two or three here that are hearing your name. So, Father, we welcome you. Lord, we...I don't even have a clue what to even pray for, but your word says your Spirit will pray for us when we don't even have the words. So, Spirit, have your way. Speak through this prayer. We celebrate this day as a day of love, something that just hit me as I was sitting there. And I would just pray, Lord, that we, as a people, whether we agree or disagree, whether we like or dislike, that we could follow your two greatest commandments, and both of them are love. Love you and love our neighbors. And, Lord, we even love that phone call. Maybe that's you a calling, who knows? But, Lord, yeah, I just pray that we could...you know, it's that we live in a world where people just...if you're not for me, then you're against me. If you don't see things the way I see things, then you're just a fool and idiot and whatever else. And, Lord, you know, that bothers me, as I'm sure it bothers you. It's time that people could come together, even in disagreements, that regardless of whatever view we hold, whatever political stance we hold, whatever political party we may be a part of, that ultimately, Lord God, you are sovereign and you are in charge and you will have your way regardless of what man may think, what man may believe that he or she...and when I say man, I'm speaking of both, you know, that they have control over. You ultimately are sovereign and you are in control.
Amen.
So, Lord, I just pray for that over this evening. Lord, I pray for wisdom. I pray that our elected officials here behind these...I don't know, that's a long table, I'll call it. I don't even know what it's called. But, Lord, I pray that you would give them wisdom to make decisions based on what is not only better for this city, but better for your kingdom. Your kingdom come, because your will will be done on this earth as it is in heaven.
Amen.
So, Father, I pray that you just give them that wisdom, that you'll give them discernment to understand and to see. And even if it's a discernment to not even speak until full understanding, if you will, then so be it. So, Lord, I just pray that. Pray for love, pray for wisdom, and out of wisdom, I pray for discernment. And, Lord, I pray for the people behind me. I just pray that they would have patience, that they too would have wisdom, and from wisdom, discernment. And if they disagree with anything that is decided, that, Lord, that you would be able to give them a spirit of grace.
Yes.
I don't agree with everything that they do. I don't agree with everything that this city has done. I don't agree with everything my boss tells me to do. But this I know, whether I agree or disagree is not matters and how I handle it. So, Lord, I pray that we, as a people, would be able to handle things with grace.
Yes.
And, Lord, just continue to bless those who serve this community. I pray you bless those that are going to come out here and speak tonight, because I'm sure their passion is strong. I don't even know what's on the agenda tonight. But, Lord, I just pray that, again, you would give them grace in their comments, in their thoughts, in their actions, in their words, in their tone, and in everything that transpires this evening. Because, end of the end, Lord God, this really, in the end, is not truly going to matter much in heaven.
Amen.
What's going to matter is how we handle it and how we treat one another.
Amen.
And, Lord, I pray that we could just treat each other in love and in grace and in mercy.
Yes.
So, Lord Jesus, just have your way, and may you be glorified and honored in everything that transpires in this place and within the hearts of the people that are here. And I just pray this, Lord God, in your most holy and precious name, and it's in your name, Lord Jesus, we all pray. Amen.
Amen.
You would please stand with me as we pledge the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Brian. Madam Clerk, if you would please go to the roll.
Alderman Freel.
Here.
Alderman Royal.
Here.
Alderman Astor.
Here.
Mayor Odom.
Here.
Alderman Kinsey.
Here.
Alderman Best.
Present.
Alderman Brinson.
Here.
All right. Board, item number three is to approve the agenda. Any changes? If not, entertain a motion.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, Mayor, I'd like to ask the board to table item number fourteen until later date, please.
Okay. Is that your motion?
That is my motion.
Do we have a second on item number fourteen to table that?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. How about the remainder of the agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to make, if there's no more changes, may I make a motion to accept the agenda as is?
Second.
Have a motion, a second and discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's have it. Number four, request and petition of citizens. Madam Clerk. Thank you. First tonight is Tracy Du Pisa at two fifteen Pollock Street. You would just please come to the mic, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I don't know if you had a chance to look at the petition, but representing the business group downtown and requesting that the board consider putting together an advisory business committee to address the issue of social districts. It's been a year and a half since the legislation was passed and the city has not addressed the issue, and the business community would like to move forward, has either implementing or at least investigating, analyzing whether or not social district is right for New Bern. But we feel we need the support of the board to move forward with a formal committee.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you. Next is Christopher and Carolyn Adams of two nine zero four Betty Gresham Lane.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. We're new to the area. We just moved from Comart, Pennsylvania, which is a village in Montgomery County, Pennsylvania. So, we've been here for seven months, and we're over at the Lakeview Community. And right now, what we would like to present to you is some issues that we are having with a water drainage problem. We were told...excuse me. We first addressed this issue with our builder, Nolan Construction, Nolan Commercial Construction Company, back in August of two thousand twenty-one. We were initially told, when we signed our contract in August of two thousand twenty-one, we were told that we would move into our home in October of two thousand twenty-one. We were not able to move into our home till almost one year later. During that time, if you could see on the demonstration here, we pointed out that there was a water issue, and we told them back then in two thousand twenty-one that this was a concern of ours. They explained to us at that time that we had no worries, the water problem would be handled. However, that has not been the case. As you can see now from these here, this is September of two thousand twenty-two, we have a river in the backs of our yards. It not only affects our property, but there are four other adjacent properties that are also affected by this water flow. Nolan pushed back on us numerous times, telling us that this was our problem and not theirs. I, in turn, went to our bylaws and discovered that within our bylaws, they are now the acting HOA until such time as our subdivision has been dedicated. They are responsible for making certain that there is a complete passageway for this water to go through, to drain properly. What happens now, it's been a lot of construction debris been pushed back there, so the water stops. Now, we were told that the water is supposed to go out to the lake, but the water stops and it backs all the way up into our property. And we were told by Nolan just recently that the city of New Bern, along with Thomas Engineering Firm, were going to resolve this issue with our home. I've asked repeatedly to give us a date and time as to when this can happen, because we are risking our home being flooded. And we were told that there is no time for us. To us, this is not acceptable. As new homeowners, we came here...this is our retirement home that we had built, and we were excited to be newcomers here. But this has been nothing but a nightmare for us, and we are begging for someone to help us resolve this issue with Nolan. If there's anything else that you would like to have, I mean, my...we consulted with an attorney to look over our bylaws and see if we were correct in our opinion, and he wrote a letter to them. They ignored the letter. Once they found out that I had consulted with an attorney, they said that we were...they were told not to speak to me or my husband again. So, therefore, I told...I wrote back to them. I said, "Okay, I won't consult with an attorney. I'm not suing you. I'm just trying to find out what my rights are." And once I said to them that, "Okay, I won't consult with an attorney anymore," they started talking to me again, but still, there's been no answer as to when this issue will be resolved. So, if you would like to have a copy of the letters and the bylaws, those provisions, I have made a copy for anyone that wish to have, and I'll turn this over to my husband.
This builder has a...my name is Christopher Adams. This builder has a tendency to procrastinate, put off, put off, put off, put off. If you got a thirty-day punch list, here we are at the seventh month, just getting around to it. They talk about certain things left, they want to put it on one year. Every time they put something off, and then workers come there, they complain. They don't want to do the job. We first moved there, we found a dead bush, shrub, that had a downspout, and the downspout was flooded, and we noticed it afterwards, and they're going to tell us that's a thirty-day warranty. I'm like, "How do you give me thirty days on a plant?" Something that I had no control of, but you had a downspout right in front of it, flooded the plant. So, they have a history of procrastinating, delaying, push you off, and fall on death areas, and we don't know what to do. We're so frustrated. We think we've made a mistake moving to New Bern. We're excited. They took the excitement away. I'm glad I'm not a first-time homeowner, because they really would do a job to you. Because right now, when that water started getting on the pitch, and you're seeing that mud, that water came within two feet of my patio, and we were running around trying to find sandbags. That was a joke. Everybody said, "You can't find sandbags," you know? So, here we are, trying to find out who could help us with this, because I'm not even sure if the city is working with this engineering. They're telling us stuff. They're not giving us a date. They haven't come out to see us, at least talk to us about it, what we want to do, how we want to do. It's going to be another six months or a year, and we will still be in the same position. And to me, that's not right. They know the problem, and it takes seven days for it to drain, another four days for you to walk on it. I try to grow grass, and you can see that much of the grass under water, I mean, above the water, so we don't know what to do.
Mr. Adams, what was your address again?
Twenty-nine oh four Betty Gresham Lane.
And what subdivision is that?
Lakeview.
Lakeview?
Yes.
Near Creek Elementary.
Alderman Astor, are you familiar with this?
Absolutely. I have visited them on the site. They definitely have a drainage problem. I contacted the city manager. The city manager had our building inspection department to go out and look. We've addressed it as it's not a city problem, for the lack of better words, that it's a developer's problem, and, you know, I've encouraged them to take it up with Mr. Sides, and I see that as of yesterday, a nice letter was written. But the problem is, Sides doesn't respond, and that's just...they're stuck. I mean, you're going to see other photos here in a few minutes, but we...the city has addressed it. We've met with them on several occasions, and I'll ask the city attorney, is this, you know, according to the building code official for the city, it has to be sloped from the foundation out ten feet, and it appears that they have that. But now, what they do have, they have a mound of stuff, junk, dirt, and everything else in their backyard that has everything flowing from the yard towards the house. So, I really think it's...
One moment.
It must be getting close to time for...I think they consulted an attorney, and I think it's getting close to time that they exercise that right.
Yes, sir.
I want to add to that. Even with the ten-foot slope that you mentioned, it's not satisfactory, because once the water started to seep, you could see big ponds, so that's not the slope, that means it's not great. Those are low spots. That's why water's...
Well, I think...I think, and we might need to get the building inspector involved back in it again, so you'll understand, but I think what the building code says, according to what I...how I understand it is, from the foundation out ten feet is the only thing that the North Carolina Building Code addresses. Is that correct, Foster?
That's correct.
Yeah. So, and according to our building inspector, that was met. And I mean, it's probably ten feet, one inch, but that was met.
Now, it also states that the stormwater drains off into the lake, so the water can't get to the lake, because there's an area in the back that's about maybe ten inches deep. Once that fills up, it's coming to me.
Yeah, and again, I think...
There's no way to go down to the street to go to the lake.
I mean, I'll let the city attorney address it, but I think you're...I think it's a developer issue.
Well, that's why we're here. But they're telling us that the city of New Bern, if we're all with the engineering, is going to take care of it, and I don't believe them.
No, sir. I don't mind stepping in. I've not heard a word from John Thomas or Mr. Sides about any of this.
You haven't?
I've not heard a word.
The gentleman that represented the company came to us and explained to my wife and I and my neighbor what it would take to do it. He even told me what was there, the farmland, the stuff that was the debris that was on the land. He even told me about how the lake was dug. He told me how deep it is that he dug, you know? It's fifty feet deep. He talks like the guy's familiar. He said, "I got to go back to Nolan and see what they want to do."
So, we've got the information. What I would recommend is for staff to prepare a letter and let you know what our stance is on this, and then you can take that letter to whomever you need to, but it's not a city of New Bern issue. They've stated that we haven't heard from the engineer or the developer to talk about this, so it's a private property, personal rights issue. It's nothing to do with the city of New Bern. So, we'll be happy to get you a formal document that states that, and you can use that however you see fit.
And Mayor, I'll also add that I did meet with several of the neighbors out there. It was several months ago, and I did send the letter to Sides Construction, and they never responded to...regarding their concerns, and they never responded to me either.
Okay.
So, they got a pattern. It always fine, and that's a problem. They always find you, they always find us, so I guess I have to sell it and buy it where, you know? That's what it's going to be like. I was just told me my retirement home, so I guess I'm just up the creek without a paddle. That's how I feel about it.
Sorry, sir.
It's not right, particularly with our bylaws.
I just...I don't want to cut you off, but the petition of citizens is four minutes per person.
Oh, yeah.
I allowed you enough since there was two of you, but we got to move on to the rest of the agenda.
I understand, and we thank you so very much for allowing us to send over our allow time.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for hearing us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Jeff Wood Yaslini. Sorry if I didn't get that right, of thirteen sixteen National Avenue.
Yes, sir. Good evening, everyone. That's Wood Yaslini, is the last name.
Okay, Yaslini.
Not a problem. I'm the current president of the Historic Riverside Neighborhood Association, and I come here tonight to ask you to consider the discussion you may have this evening about the change of the speed limit on National Avenue. And I have copies of my presentation here. If you'd like to take them, it's mine. And this is...our concern is the area, the residential area on National Avenue between Dunn Street and Neuse Avenue, which is around the cemetery by the playground there. And like any of the other neighborhoods in the area in town, the houses are very closely connected. There's a lot of foot traffic, and other neighborhoods in the city have, I think, have a slower twenty-five mile an hour speed limit. Currently, the speed limit on National is thirty-five miles an hour, which we find excessive. People go way beyond that, and we have a lot of pedestrian traffic, children walking, playing on the sidewalks, bicycles, that type of thing, and the truck traffic and the car traffic there is very hazardous, in our opinion. And a lot of the houses on National Avenue do not have turnaround driveways, so they're backing out into speeding cars on National Avenue, obstructed by other parked cars or the large old-grooved trees on the avenue. And there's been a number of automobile incidents on National Avenue. I have a police report here. This is from January of two thousand twenty-two through mid-September of two thousand twenty-two for National Avenue in the area I'm speaking about. And there were, in that time period, there were twenty-three traffic stops by the police for excessive speeding. There were four hit-and-runs involving parked cars, damage to parked cars on the avenue, and five traffic crashes, three of which involved injury. So, it's a very hazardous situation we have right there on National Avenue. We're asking that you consider that change of speed limit. The historic district downtown from the bridge on Up Front Street, up through North Craven in our neighborhood, and Past Door, all the speed limits are twenty-five miles an hour. And although it is considered a major thoroughfare through the city, we think because of the traffic and pedestrian concerns there, that we really...we're asking you to take a real good look at that. We actually had one of our members do a little math calculation and measured the time loss between the railroad tracks and the red light, and it was a twenty-second delay between going twenty-five miles an hour and thirty-five miles an hour, which we think is enough for people to consider the safety concerns of that corridor. And also, if you're really considering this, you might want to even consider extending that down George Street with all the pedestrian traffic on...with the RCS Center, the Senior Center, the George Street Playground, and the baseball field, but that's your prerogative. But I'm here today to ask your indulgence to please consider that change of the speed limit from thirty-five to twenty-five on National between Dunn and Neuse.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Victoria Blackiston of twelve oh five North Pasture.
Evening. I want to speak about the speed on National. In fact, we have examples of people that speed. I mean, they literally will go from forty-five to fifty-five to sixty, and sometimes they're very large trucks, and that's not supposed to be a truck through fair as far as getting from one section to the next, but we have them come through all the time, and it's quite noisy, and you're very unsafe walking on the sidewalk, if nothing else. And I feel like the power to regulate exists for society, and if we don't have it and we don't make changes, then, you know, the miners eventually make all the decisions. So, all I'm asking for is that we consider the value of a neighborhood and that it is not diminished by the speed of a road that goes through it that makes it extremely dangerous to many people. And truly, you cannot come from a side road onto National without having to worry whether you're going to get hit or not, and you can't even see around the cars that are parked. So, it makes it difficult. So, we're just asking for the slower speed limit for the safety of the neighborhood and the opportunities that we provide.
Thank you. Next is Ruth Cooper of ten twenty-two Collaton Lane in Trent Woods.
Hi. My husband, dog, and I lived here a year ago from Cincinnati, and we love Craven County and New Bern. One thing we don't love is litter, and I'm sure that tourists and everybody else who passes through is kind of put off by the amount of litter that's seen on our roadways. While the county now does four clean sweeps a year, and many local nonprofits do many cleanups in New Bern, I don't think we have an organized program to prevent littering and illegal dumping of trash. Recently, while in the Duffyville neighborhood, I asked men from the Public Works Department who were resurfacing a street if any of them had taken part in a big cleanup in Duffyville several years ago. One man said he had. He added that he was very disheartened to come to the area again a week or two later and see as much litter and trash as had been there before the cleanup. I met with two other people in the Public Works Department to discuss stormwater management. When I mentioned the recent cleanup, they were also discouraged about how much difference a cleanup would make if people didn't stop littering and dumped the trash in the environment. Many people facing litter-filled communities feel disappointed about the state of their community and wish it were cleaner. However, they hesitate to remove litter from their community because of concerns such as disease spread and injury from hidden needles. They also feel a sense of futility in picking up litter as so much quickly reappears. While being outside is one of the best ways to boost our mental health, that effect is dampened when the outdoors is trashed with plastic and litter. Recently, Pitt County announced and publicized an anti-litter campaign called "Litter Free For You and Me." It has three stages. Part one focuses on education. Part two will involve banners hung at county buildings, and a fourth-grade litter cleanup challenge. Part three, tarpit or ticket, will focus on educating the public on enforcement of fines for littering, illegal trash dumping, and unsecured loads, which can lead to potentially dangerous situations. They will even provide tarps to truck drivers so they can secure their loads. Almost two years ago, the Sun Journal had an article that said, "Steven Astor, Chip Hughes, Greg Murphy, and Steve Tyson are concerned about litter along our roadways." For thirty-five years, Texas has had a "Don't Mess With Texas" anti-litter campaign. Willie Nelson and others have done public service songs and announcements to prevent littering. They've reduced roadway litter by over fifty-five percent. My husband and I took part in the February fourth clean sweep. We picked up eight big orange bags full of trash and litter in New Bern. I picked up litter with folks from my church along the parkway by the senior tower on Walt Bellamy. I don't plan to continue to pick up other people's trash. For thirty-five years, Texas has had a Don't Mess with Texas Anti-Litter Campaign. Willie Nelson and others have done public service songs and announcements to prevent littering. They've reduced roadway litter by over fifty-five percent. My husband and I took part in the February fourth clean sweep. We picked up eight big orange bags full of trash and litter in New Bern. I picked up litter with folks from my church along the parkway by the senior tower on Walt Bellamy. I don't plan to continue to pick up other people's trash. People need to know that littering is illegal, has consequences, and that it's not okay. Perhaps signs that say, "No littering, violators will be prosecuted," would help. Maybe more trash cans. I know there's three trash cans right at this intersection. So I doubt that there's much litter right at this intersection. But in some neighborhoods, you can go for blocks and blocks and blocks without seeing a trash can. When Walt Disney built Disney World, he wanted to have a trash can within fourteen paces so people would not litter. That was the amount of space that they figured people would, if they had to walk more than fourteen paces, they would just dump it. And he teaches everybody who works at Disney World to pick up litter. I really think it's time for Craven County and New Bern to spend some time, money, and energy on an anti-litter campaign. It will save money in the long run. Perhaps the county in New Bern could join forces to decrease littering, trash dumping, and unsecured loads. And as you can see, I have a T-shirt that says, "It's simple, don't litter." I give these to my neighbors and people at the well I have at my church, anybody who wants one. I bought a hundred and seventy-five. There's still a lot on my dining table. So if anybody wants one, I have them here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sharon Braddus, twenty-nine oh six Betty Gresham Lane.
I would be speaking with Carolyn or Chris for speaking too. Is that still okay?
Sure.
Hi. So I live next door to Kristen, Carolyn. Good evening, everybody. And as they had already stated, yes, we have been after Maholen or A-Sides. Since we moved in July, we've had some numerous rains and whatnot. We actually had about a turtle, about nine inches big, swimming across our patio up against our sliding glass doors on one of the rains last summer. And these aren't even the rains that you guys normally get, which are very heavy. I'm from Colorado. We moved here. We love this old town park. We just, you know, the people, it's just lovely here. But this, again, has been so disappointing and frustrating that we cannot seem to be able to get anything done with the builder to correct his problem that was approved by the town, from our point of view, to correct the situation. That last storm Ian Ian that came through, I literally ran outside to take pictures. There are no swells or depressions between the homes. So there's no water running from the back of the lot, which is the north side, to the south, which is Betty Gresham, to sewer lines to go to those retention ponds or that lake. The water just sits in the backyards from east to west, from Old Airport Road to Under Rider in almost everyone's yard. But it's coming to this side, which is my house, their house, and sits there. It looks like a river coming through. You can just see it blowing across the way. A-Sides did much of the, I want to say, the regrading over and over again because it wasn't an organized way of building. So they build a house here, a house there, and then a house there, and they come back and forth and regrade those lots. They kept pushing on the edges of the back of the lot, which is Rice's Crossing, Birm Area, trees, debris, construction junk, all sorts of lovely things. That's one of the problems because none of that has been cleaned up. Talking about trash, we've got an enormous amount of that kind of thing all over the Lakeview community that needs to be cleaned up. If the town, the city, would like people to move here and be proud of it, why are there no ordinances in place, no rules, regulations, things of that sort, that will encourage the builder or force the builders in any community first to clean up that mess? There shouldn't be all these dead trees and construction debris and drywall and pipes at the very edge of our property against someone else's community's property. Why is that not cleaned up? So that's part of our biggest problem. But also, as everything was being approved and they came back and regraded another lot and then three lots down, they regraded another one. So the elevations are changing. It did not stay the same from the beginning of the project to where it's now finished. So we've got all these elevations. We literally have slopes in our backyard, which are not supposed to be there according to the plans from Thomas Engineering. There are these small little divots and swells that are on Thomas Engineering's plans where there's supposed to be drainage going six inches from the back of our house down, downward to the north side of the house or the property, which do not go down, does not go to Under Rider. We all have these, and again, we have big slopes in our backyard. What am I supposed to do when the water comes in again? I've had water once in the house, just at the sliding glass door. But is it my expectation that I move into a brand-new home and I expect that I'm going to flood? And I have to repair the entire house and all my furniture and everything I have because of that? Something is not right. Either the ordinances need to be changed, you need to get better with water control and drainage and sewage or something. But as a citizen, I shouldn't be expected to have to pay for this because I would have expected well-laid plans and things to have been followed correctly all the way through this construction project, not a piece at a time, and then been left for me to deal with. We're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Thank you. Next is Jamisha Harris of two 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 Monterey Circle.
Good evening, board. How are you? One, I didn't put my address on there, but I feel you. I'm here tonight to talk about housing. My first thing that I'm concerned about is that, we all know, I've been in that seat, that the mayor has the sole responsibility of the New Bern Housing Authority. And you are the only one that has the right to appoint someone to that board. So I'm trying to have an understanding on why you appointed Sabrina Bangle and Dana Outlaw to the board. And now there is unreadiness on that board in regards to Tiffany and how she feels and how she's uncomfortable. I don't think that's conducive to the community. And we always talk about transparency and coming to the board. So I would like, whether you send an email or however you're going to respond, I would like answers to know if the rumor mill is true that she was sent there to push forward, tearing down the business, the buildings, which, though we understand, they need to be torn down. It's no disrespect to the community, but the buildings have to be torn down for you to rebuild. With them being torn down, right, we are under the impression that there is a backdoor conversation with the Kessler Group to, once the housing authority is dismantled and brought under the city, that that property, the Days End property, once you're able to figure out a deal with the Habitat Restore Building, is going to be sold to the Kessler Group because the deal was lost over at the waterfront Union Point. Again, it's the rumor mill, but I'm coming to you guys to let you know that this is what's circulating in the community. And being here and hearing these situations, I've always been an advocate on this board and I've always been an advocate for transparency and what's right. There's the law, there's right and there's wrong. We cannot sit on this board, and you cannot sit on this board and be a representative of the individuals that sit here and pay taxes and say, "It's not a city issue." It is. Because you have a responsibility to communicate and figure out how to communicate with the individuals that are building these homes. We have no more land available in New Bern. We need housing. Affordable housing is not market rent. I feel that Trent Court is going to be gentrified. And where are the individuals going to go? There is a racial equity concern in the city. This is something that has been spoken to and spoken on for a very long time. Today's Valentine's Day, and you know, any other time, I will come and really give my all, but I'm giving love today. And based on what that pastor said and the words that he used, today's message in the Bible was Romans twelve ten. And it says that, "Love each other with genuine affection and delight in honoring each other." The message version says, "Love from the center of who you are. Don't fake it. Run for dear life from evil. Hold on for dear life to good and be good friends who love deeply and practice second fiddle." I had to Google what that was and what it meant. It meant that you don't always have to be in the limelight. You don't always have to be right. I don't always have to be right. But there are some lack of resources in these communities. And the only way that we're going to be able to see eye to eye is if we sit at the table and understand the discrepancies in these communities. We are tired of marching. We're tired of protesting. We're tired of begging for resources. We need housing, and we needed yesterday. And it's nice that you, Bobby Alderman Astor, I'm on the other side, took some of your funds to, you know, produce some sort of housing. But that is little to what we need. I'm so sorry to hear that they have water issues going on. But Duffy Field been having water issues for what, three hundred, three hundred years, ever since it's been erected? I'm going to be respectful with my time.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Barbara Sampson of four eighty West North Carolina Highway fifty-five.
First, let me give honor to God, who is the reason for the season and the reason that I have the strength and intelligence to stand before the Board of August and address my concern. And good evening.
Good evening.
Whatever I say is not criticism, it's just observation. And I want to know if this fit any of you guys, this definition of transparency. And to tell you where the transparency as a core value. Transparency implies openness, communication, and accountability. Another way of looking at transparency, not hiding anything. Whether things are good or bad, you openly and honestly convey information as you know it. And I feel like you all have been doing that to the public. I know you go, but I know you all have to make decisions. But you go behind closed doors and make a decision. And then after you make the decision, without asking us how we feel, then you let us have a public input, where you know it don't make any difference what we say. You already made a decision. And I know this because of what happened at the Tupperware incident. Oh, yes, you let us have a public input. Oh, you did a fatality. Let us hear what we had to say. But you didn't communicate because you had already made a decision. So what we want in the future, going forward, please, let us know what's going on. And if you need a group of people and you say, "Well, you're not part of the group," I am the chairman of the people's assembly. So you always have the meaning. Come to me when you start deciding what you want to do about selling something. I do pay taxes, so I can speak. I do have intelligence. I do have ideas or things that you all feel like you're the only one who knows something about. So just be transparent. And if this fit you, I'm not talking about you. But if it don't fit you, I'm talking about you. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you. Next up is Charles Skinner of twelve oh three National Avenue.
Good evening. Happy Valentine's. I know all your spouses enjoy y'all being away from home tonight, but we appreciate your time. I am speaking again. I'm another one speaking on behalf of the Riverside Historical Association for the reduction of the speed on between Dunn Street and Neuse Avenue. One thing that was not mentioned is we did turn over a petition signed by about seventy to eighty people that live in this neighborhood to reduce that speed. So I think Rick has a copy and Foster has a copy. One of the things, I think the matter of the layout of that street speaks for itself. And I mean that, coming back from Charlotte, I came down Broad Street tonight, today. And if you notice, Broad Street goes from thirty-five, I think thirty-five to twenty-five miles per hour. And they've got the bump outs as you're coming down on either side that sort of narrow that road. Does everybody know what I'm talking about? That reduces the speed limit. One of the problems we have on this particular stretch is people are parking along the road on the right-hand side. There are people that get in in the driver's side, and we've got cars coming down both ways going thirty-five to forty-five, fifty miles per hour. Now, we've spoken to the police about this, and they said they've done their surveys and there aren't that many. My wife and I, one of the few that sit out on our porch facing National Avenue, spring, summer, and fall. There are a lot more people going faster than thirty-five miles per hour down that stretch of road. And it is a dangerous area. You've got River Road, which y'all reduced to twenty-five, or is twenty-five. You got Broad is twenty-five. This particular stretch of National Avenue has as much pedestrian traffic as either one of those roads, if not more than River Road. We have asked for signs to be put up. I think River Road has two signs, twenty-five miles per hour, and they flash. We have mentioned doing that. We've gotten no luck with at least putting those up for thirty-five miles per hour. But it is just a, it is a, basically, a very dangerous situation. I've seen people almost hit, pulling out of their driveway, backing out of driveways and that. We've got kids on that road. And we're talking about a fairly, heavily residential barrier between that stretch. So I know y'all are busy tonight. Everyone wants to get home. We appreciate your time. And we appreciate your speaking to this night. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sharon Bachalkus, one thousand nine North Craven Street.
You did that very well. I see quite a bit of my Riverside neighborhood's neighbors here. It's a great neighborhood. We bought a house and moved in December nineteen eighty-five. And when the explosion of the grain silos happened, the winter of twenty-two, two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen, that was the straw that broke the camel's back, and that was the end of the sewer system on our street that had been plaguing us for fifteen years. I'm not going to call Public Works, and I'm not going to encourage my neighbors up the street to call Public Works. I've already played that game with them and it doesn't work. So I'm just going to come here to remind you. Riverside Neighborhood is the very first suburb of New Bern. It has terracotta sewers, which are deteriorating and collapsing. And today being Valentine's Day, I love my neighbors, especially the ones that live a half a block from me right over across the railroad track, who didn't get brand-new infrastructure in two thousand seventeen. They're having trouble flushing their toilets. It can take over a half an hour to fill the washing machine. We all know the infrastructure has to be replaced. And if you have two million dollars to ship off to Colorado for investment, how about taking that two million dollars and investing it in the infrastructure that has to be replaced? You wouldn't put up with a sewer system that doesn't work half the time. And I don't think the neighbors in Riverside should have to put up with it too. Why don't you have your Public Works guy go run their colonoscopy for plumbing through the sewers? And let's locate exactly where they collapsed and let's start fixing them. Let's start replacing them. Yeah, it's going to cost a lot of money, a lot of money. But it's not going to wait anymore. It's simply not going to wait anymore. So I'm bringing it to you instead of taking it to Public Works because I know how those people operate, and I've danced the dance with them. And I'm here on behalf of my neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Pete Frye, four oh six Forbes Alley.
Back in November of last year, I made a presentation to the Redevelopment Commission for two oh three and two oh seven Jones Street. I wanted to build a house there. And most of you guys know the story. That didn't, that was cast out for a plan. Redevelopment Commission wants to build some other four small houses there. I think that is not going to go through now. I still want to, well, I was assured in January that they had a plan. There was going to be shovels in the ground. Shovels in the dirt was, that was their words, to start building housing. Then the meeting last month- Then the meeting last month, you guys were asking for seed money, or the Redevelopment Commission wanted seed money. I don't think that they got it. My bid is still in here in City Hall, there's two offers. My money is still here in the vault. I'm still interested in building a house on one of the properties, and I want to build affordable housing to rent on the other parcel. And I'm curious, there was nothing, it wasn't spoke of at the last Redevelopment Commission meeting, and it's not on the agenda for tonight. I think Mr. Astor said you had a, you had a partnership with the Redevelopment Commission. Do you have any news on that at all? I'm just curious if there's any new news on those parcels.
Alderman Astor will get with you. I will tell you that I asked staff to ensure that a decision was made as quickly as possible so you could get your deposit relinquished. I think they attempted to do that at the last meeting, but the last meeting the Redevelopment Commission had was a special call meeting, and they didn't put it on the agenda, it wasn't properly noticed, so they couldn't do it at that point in time. So at their next meeting, they are supposed to be taking up that issue, just so you're aware. Okay, last but not least, David Beck of 3210 Elizabeth Avenue.
Good evening, Council. Happy Valentine's Day. Some of y'all have seen me before. I'm back again, and I'm trying to get an ordinance added in for miniature goats, both Nigerian dwarves and pygmy goats, fifty-pound goats inside the city limits. Havelock has just recently opened up their city ordinance to allow goats inside the city, and I was wondering if I couldn't get the same courtesy here. That's it.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, that concludes item number four, request and petition of citizens. Board, moving on to the consent agenda. What's the pleasure of the board?
Making motion to approve it.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Prill.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Item number eight, update from CPL Architects on Stanley White Recreation Center. Mr. Hughes.
Good evening, Mayor and Alderman. I'm happy to introduce Chris Volcano. He is with CPL Architects. They are the group that have been working on the Stanley White Recreation Center project, and he's going to give a presentation on where things stand and moving forward with this project.
Hello, everybody. As Foster said, my name's Chris Volcano, and I'm the project manager for the Stanley White Recreation Center. I just wanted to start off by thanking you guys for having me here tonight and letting us present to you. My goal with this presentation is to give everyone an update in where we stand with our plans, the permitting process, and the bidding schedule moving forward. So, as you can see, we have our site plan. The last time that we presented to this board was in June of last year, and not much has changed from a site perspective. We have made a few modifications, but the site plan you see is very similar to the one that we showed you in June. The one change that you will note, the previous plan had showed an entry off of Gaston Boulevard adjacent to the apartment building to the right of the site. We have modified that so that the entry and exit points for this building are both off Third Avenue. We did that for a few different reasons. The building signage will be along Third Avenue, and we didn't want to create any confusion in terms of where you enter and exit that site. And also, we've added a passenger drop-off that you can see right there in front of the building, so creating that passenger drop-off loop was also another reason why we relocated the entry. In terms of the floor plan, once again, this is very similar to the thirty-five thousand square foot option that you all saw in June of last year. We've developed it further in terms of our plans and our detailing, but a majority of what you're seeing here was presented in June of last year. That being said, I still would like to walk everyone through the building, just to familiarize everyone with the program. So if you look at the bottom of the sheet, towards the center, we have the front entry doors and the front entry vestibule. So as you come in through the entry doors, there are four offices located just to the right with a workroom and a break room area. As you kind of move into this space, you have a reception desk and an office for a staffing manager there as well. Moving into the lobby itself, you have the main stair off to the left and the elevator that goes up to the second floor as well, off to the right of the gym entry doors. If you follow the corridor down to the left, the largest room on the left-hand side of the plan is the multipurpose space. We have three bays that are within that multipurpose space and two operable partitions to kind of divide that space up if we need to have smaller breakout groups within the multipurpose room. Adjacent to the multipurpose, we have our concessions area and catering kitchen. Both the multipurpose room and the catering kitchen each have their own storage areas and support spaces. And then the final kind of support space on that side of the building would be the family restroom located just to the right of the concessions. As you move back through the center of the building over to the right wing of this plan, you'll see the two purple rooms there on the southern portion of the corridor. The first one is a game room, and the second one is a media lab or kind of esports area. This room as well has an operable partition that can open up or close off that room depending on the needs. Adjacent to that, we have a majority of our restrooms on the first floor, and then in the bottom right-hand corner of the plan, we have our electrical, our IT, and mechanical rooms. On the northern half of that corridor, we have a second egress stair that goes up to the second floor, another family restroom, a laundry room, and a screening room. And last but certainly not least, we have our gym that's located on the northern half of the plan with our basketball courts and volleyball courts as well. Level two, as I mentioned before, we do have two stairs and an elevator that go up to the second level. The biggest portion of this plan you'll see is the walking track that surrounds those basketball courts and volleyball courts that I spoke about earlier. And then the two larger spaces at the bottom of the plan are the workout area and cardio area. And then finally, off to the right of the restrooms, we have an exercise studio that can be used for smaller classes like yoga, you know, and smaller breakout classes of that nature. Finally, on this floor, we do have a few support spaces. So we have a janitor's closet, another family restroom, and then a few storage areas as well. In terms of the exterior of the building, very similar to what we presented in June of last year, this is part of that thirty-five thousand square foot option that we pushed through permitting. So you'll notice that a large portion of the building is made up of precast concrete. When we went through this design, we really wanted to make sure that the exterior material was going to be durable and resilient, and it was going to last, but it also was going to be cost-effective in terms of giving us the most bang for our buck. And precast concrete certainly does that. All of the exterior walls you see here are twelve inches thick. Eight inches of that is concrete, so it's an extremely resilient material that will be of good use for a shelter. And then the cost efficiency is great as well. These are crafted in factories, so the precision involved is extremely high, and the fact that these are able to be taken to the site and the amount of labor that's involved is extremely low compared to, you know, constructing a corinth shell of a building this size with other means. So in terms of the elevations themselves, the top elevation faces Third Avenue. This is kind of our front elevation, so to speak. There is a key plan in the bottom left-hand corner to kind of orient you a little bit as well, but that elevation, like I said, faces Third Avenue. So if you're looking at it, you have the main entry doors on the front lower portion of that elevation. We have glazing to the left of that that kind of covers that multipurpose room, so we're bringing a lot of light into that space. And then we also have glazing on the second floor that looks into the workout and cardio area as well. The elevation below that faces the adjacent apartment building. You'll notice we do have glazing on the upper floor there as well for that exercise studio and yoga studio. We have a lot of glazing in that space, as well as the elevated walking track to the right of that. And then finally, before we finish off with the other two elevations, the last piece that I wanted to touch on is the overhead coiling door that you'll see in the bottom right-hand corner. We typically like to include a door like this into the gym just so that, you know, if there's any needs for maintenance, any sort of lift or maintenance vehicle that needs to get into the space, we have a door that's tied into the hardscape around the building as well. So these two elevations, the elevation at the top of the page is our rear elevation that faces Gaston Boulevard. The four doors that you see here all are egress only. These are egressing from the gymnasium. And then the bottom elevation there faces Broad Street and the adjacent parking lot. So we included a few renderings as well. You know, sometimes looking at an elevation can be a little bit difficult in terms of, you know, understanding the scale of the building and kind of that human scale. So we wanted to include a few renderings to kind of understand what this is going to look like and understand what that front entry is going to feel like. So a few points here, so we do have a front entry canopy that should be well-lit and give some cover during any sort of storm if anyone needs to be waiting outside for a ride. And then you'll notice on the left-hand side of the page, we have kind of a sculptural piece. We had seen a photograph a while back of a decorative structural member from the previous recreation center that we wanted to use as kind of a way to pay tribute to that recreation center and kind of have that out front as a sculptural piece as well. But in terms of the design, I think that's the extent of the updates that I have. In terms of our permitting and bidding, I'd like to kind of just take everyone through where we stand right now. So as you can see from the multitude of logos that we have on here, we have quite a few agencies that we're working with to get approval. Four agencies in total and eight total approvals that we need to start building this project. A lot of those are contingent upon other agencies having approval. So I'd like to kind of start off on the far right. NCDQ, the Department of Environmental Quality, reviewed both our erosion control and stormwater submittals. Both of those have been approved, and those actually are needed for the city of New Bern to approve the stormwater submittal on their end. Adjacent to that, on the left, we have the NC DOI, the Department of Insurance, and the Office of the State Fire Marshal. Due to the size of our building, it being over twenty thousand square feet and of an assembly nature, we needed to go through DOI for their approval from the fire marshal. Those drawings were submitted back in November. We received comments last month and resubmitted last month as well. After talking to their reviewer, we're hoping to have our answer on whether we have a DOI approval later this month. And that approval was also needed before the city of New Bern Fire Department could sign off on their portion of the project as well. So when the updated drawings were sent to DOI, we also sent them to the city so that we have consistent drawings to both agencies. And then finally, to finish off with the city of New Bern permits, we have the building permit and the site permit, which both have been approved. And last but not least, we do have FEMA. So the FEMA review, per their guidelines, we do need jurisdictional approval from all of the agencies you see above before they will review our drawings. So we have, we're hoping that we can round up these last three approvals and submit our drawings to FEMA in the coming weeks. In terms of our next steps and where we go from here, we have received all, we've received comments from all of these agencies, with the exception of the city of New Bern Fire Department. So we're rounding up all of our documents at this point, and we're planning to put together an issue for construction set or bid set in a few weeks here and put out the advertisement for bid later this month. Our hope is, based on the bidding schedule you see here, is that we're hoping to have a bid opening towards the end of March. And I think that should do it in terms of our update. If you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Board have questions?
Yes, I have two, please. Number one, what is the size of the multipurpose room?
I will check really quick. Don't know off the top of my head. While I'm looking at that, I think we made an effort, it is almost fourteen hundred square feet. We wanted to make sure, I think in our previous presentation, we wanted to make sure that every, everything that was in the previous recreation center, we had in this recreation center, and that those sizes were met, if not exceeded, in the new recreation center.
Okay, my second question is, was this plan presented to the advisory committee? This plan you're presenting tonight? I read a comment from one of the members of the Stanley White Advisory Committee that said they wish that this plan had been presented to them first, before it came before the Board of Alden.
Alderman Royal, I'd like to address that, if you don't mind. So back when we were going through the environmental assessment process, it's basically the same plan that, this is when I was director of Parks and Recreation at that time, and I was the chair of that committee. We had two options for the Stanley White Recreation Center Advisory Committee to look at, and we asked them to make a recommendation on either of those plans to the governing board to finish up our scoping work. We could not get that committee to make a motion on accepting either plan. Then we had to go to the governing board at the time to see which route they wanted to go. So that's where we stand. That committee could not make a recommendation to the board at that time. And so this is why we've moved forward with this, and it's the same plan that the governing board approved previously.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you for the update.
Yeah, thank you for having me.
Item number nine, presentation on GIS Hub, Mr. Hughes.
We've been working on quite a lot of technology updates throughout the city, and I'm really pleased tonight for Alice Wilson, our GIS manager, to come up and give you an example of what she has been working on with her staff. The information that she is going to share is on our website now, and we'll talk about where you can find that, and also information is going out to the media shortly after her presentation, so everyone will have an idea of what they can access and where that will be located.
Foster, before she starts, is there any way possible we can get an electronic version of that presentation of the Stanley White Center?
Absolutely, and it will also be posted on the Stanley White Recreation Center site.
Thank you.
And you should also have that in your packet as well.
Oh, is it?
All right, as the city manager said, we've been working on this site for a while. It started years ago, actually, and we haven't had the time.
Time to work on it, and so we hired new staff this past year. September, we hired an analyst programmer who has worked on this diligently. The goal for this site is to share information, spatial information. I think Colleen has put it in several different locations on the city's website, so under Business you can find it, and I think like Ben mentioned, it'll be more information's coming out. So this goal of this site is So this goal of this site is to provide information, spatial information. We get a lot of projects going on and people want to know where they can find data. Used to do flash drives and FTP sites and all that kind of stuff, so this presents a more secure, you can actually click on this data and look for different data and you can access a lot of our data. You'll notice that there's actually a sign-in link up there at the top, so some of this data will not be, you will have to have credentials to have access to it, but a lot of it is public information that you're going to see. So if you scroll down, there's actually a feedback survey that, Tim, Tim Blanchard is the person who's our analyst, set this up, so you can actually access this site if you see some data or lack of some data you would like or some applications you want to see, then, you know, please give us that feedback and we'll provide that. We've just got some basic general information on the city as far as population, other demographics. As the state, the census data comes available, we'll have some more demographic information to be up there. We've got a few mapping applications that a lot of people utilize, so we put those up first, but those are going to continue to grow. We've also met with a lot of the departments to get their feedback, so if you click on one of these links, you'll actually be taken to that department and see some of the maps that they have and some of the data that they have. So it's a great place to go and access the data. And again, we've got different apps, utilities, Parks and Rec, we just met with them, they're, this is the year of the trails, so one of the, the projects we want to work on is mapping out the trails throughout the city, both on water and on land. So that's a project that we're currently working on. Development Services has a lot of projects, as you can imagine. We've got a lot of development projects that are going, so this is a site that we actually just updated recently, so. My mouse doesn't want to play nice tonight. Again, we've got Police Department, Fire Department, we're working with them to get some apps. We're actually doing a project with the Fire Department right now that they've got forms that they fill out and we're using Survey 123 to, so they can use it in the field rather than having to fill it out manually. We also have data or some predefined maps that are PDFs that you can click on if you want to download, including the recent annual building permit report that we just did. And if you just want to play around with a map, you can either use it through the data, you can open one of the data sets and, and open a map, but you can also just base data viewer, you can zoom in here and there's tools up there, you can print, you can make a map or what have you, but you could turn different layers on and off. So like, these are the residential structures, parcels, and you can actually click on any of the features and you can get general information. So this is actually a living document, so again, we want feedback. If you want, if you have feedback, we'd love to, to get that. If you want to use the site and not quite sure how to use it, please reach out to us. Some of the other ones, projects that we've got up here, just that we're getting ready to add, I think Colleen showed this a couple of weeks ago, like the city of New Bern's projects and grants, this is a dashboard that's pulling from a survey. You can whittle it down, so like the AARP funds, if you want to see what projects around the city, if you wanted to find it even more, you can, you know, select like what is Parks and Recs, I think, or Public Works, you can whittle it down. And if you look on the side, you can see the individual projects, you can get just quick on-the-fly information and you will notice that the product, number of projects and the amount changes when you make a selection. And we also, current, this is already up on our site, we redid this site, current development projects, we did have it where you just had to scroll and scroll and scroll, so we redid it so that you can just open up, if you're just looking at commercial projects, I know we were talking about development and how it might impact neighborhoods, you can come in here and get a general idea of new projects. We see that dirt move, we all want to know what's going on there. So this is a, a great resource. As soon as we know that a project actually is going to be built, then we add to this site. And I know it's Valentine's Day and I don't want to keep you here, but please access these sites and utilize them. My dog, I told him there were special treats tonight, so I need to get home and take care of him. But this is really great, the hub site, I think it's going to be awesome, it's a great way to share information, both with the public and it's, it's, like I said, it's a living document, so you'll, you'll be checked back often because there's going to be a lot of good stuff that's going to be added to it. And I'll take any questions, if anybody has questions.
Board, any questions?
Great job.
Thank you, Mrs. Allison.
Thank you. Okay, item number 10, consider adopting a resolution approving the Redevelopment Commission's sale of 827 Cedar Street. Ms. Hughes?
In August of 2022, the Redevelopment Commission received a bid of $1,140 from William Richardson for the purchase of 827 Cedar Street. The parcel was a very small, .02 acre vacant residential lot with a tax value of $1,520. His bid was advertised, but no additional bids received. Sale is approved, restrictions will be imposed to prohibit property from being used to store junk direct vehicles and to prohibit the erection of any structures. Proceeds from the sale will be placed in the redevelopment fund.
Board have questions?
I make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving the Redevelopment Commission's sale of 827 Cedar Street.
Second. Have a motion to second any discussion. Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Royal.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Preel?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Item number 11, consider adopting a resolution approving a law enforcement mutual assistance agreement with Havelock Police Department. Mr. Hughes?
Like to ask Chief Gallagher to come forward and make this presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Board, in 2016, this board authorized Chief of Police to sign memos of understanding and mutual aid agreements with local police departments throughout North Carolina. Under the caveat that it met a, or the elements of a sample policy, it became necessary for Havelock to re-initiate a, a mutual aid agreement with New Bern based on the fact that they onboarded a new chief. In my review of that MOU or that mutual aid agreement, I found five areas that were inconsistent or what, or did not mirror the spirit of that sample policy. Three of the areas were command and control issues that I, as the chief, have no problem with and I recommend that this board also approve those changes. Two of the areas within that agreement held the city and this department liable financially for lost and damaged equipment and also for reasonable expenses. In review of those two, I think those are reasonable. In fact, there is language within our sample policy that covers parts of the identification of damaged property. So we're not that far off of what we've agreed to in our sample policy. And with respect to reasonable expenses, as I outlined in my memorandum to the mayor, we've done this before specifically with utility support when we bring in outside entities to come to New Bern to assist us. I think this is reasonable and I recommend that this board approve the, the MOU with Havelock. It's a force multiplier, it will apply to us just as well as it will apply to them if they call us to, Havelock to assist them.
Okay, board have questions?
May I make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving law enforcement mutual assistance agreement with the Havelock Police Department?
Second. Have a motion and a second any discussion. Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Astor.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Preel?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Item number 12, consider adopting an ordinance to amend Chapter 70, traffic and vehicles to amend the scheduled speed limits to reduce speed on National Avenue. Mr. Hughes?
Like to ask Mr. Charles to come forward and make this presentation.
Good evening, Board, Mayor. Following up on what you heard from the residents and the Riverside community, we received their petition and along with the Public Works and the Police Department, we evaluated their concerns with the current posted speed limit on National Avenue and came to the conclusion that supported their concerns that a reduction of 25 miles an hour would be appropriate in this area. So what you have before you, right, tonight is a reduction from Neuse Avenue, which is just to the town side of the Jack Smith Creek Bridge to Dunn Street, right near the railroad tracks. That will tie in currently to George Street, which is already posted at 25. If approved, our department is prepared to install a site this week.
Board have questions? Most pleasure, item number 12.
If there's no more questions, I'd make a motion to adopt an ordinance to amend Chapter 70, traffic and vehicles to amend the scheduled speed limits to reduce speed on National Avenue.
Second. Have a motion to second any discussion. Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Preel?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Item number 13, consider adopting a resolution to authorize the execution of a deed and transfer and reversion agreement to transfer properties to the Redevelopment Commission. Mr. Hughes?
Back in the spring of 2022, the Redevelopment Commission approached city staff about the possibility of getting some city-county owned properties so they could do some redevelopment. So I had conversations with the county manager, we discussed this for several weeks, they finally agreed on 10 properties of the Redevelopment Commission's choosing, as long as there was a transfer and reversion agreement in place. The current transfer and, and a reversion agreement, it concludes a plan that if the development has not occurred with, that meets the redevelopment plan within 60 months, the, the, those properties would revert back to the city, the city would in turn revert those rights back to the county as well on the appropriate percentage. Happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Board have questions? If not, most pleasure, the board on item number 13.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution to authorize the execution of a deed and transfer and revision agreement to transfer properties to the Redevelopment Commission.
Second. Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Best.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Preel?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to item number 15, consider adopting an ordinance to amend Section 6685 for city-sponsored events. Mr. Hughes?
So maybe the last time this, this schedule of city-sponsored events was updated was in 2018 and we've gone through this list and, and making the following recommendations and I'm going to read, read this list to you. There are, there are a few events that are currently offered by city departments, you really don't need to be on this list, it's, it's a department function. And that includes the city's New Year's Eve celebration, the National Night, and the National Night Out, those are the two events. Other events that, that are on this list that are no longer being held include Martin Luther King Jr. Parade, Neuse River Days, Vision Forward, Relay for Life, and the George Washington Southern Tour. We did have a request from Victor Taylor with Vision Forward. He has been doing the Black History Month Parade in February for several years and he has requested this be considered as a city-sponsored event. If approved, as a city-sponsored event, the estimated in-kind contribution for the parade would be approximately $560 and this includes $155 for barricades and $405 for police service. Happy to answer any questions you may have on that request. And I think Mr. Taylor is here as well.
What's the, what's the difference in the MLK Junior Parade as far as the cost of what that was?
It was probably about the same cost, it hasn't been held many years, but that was held in January. The Black History Month Parade is held in February this year.
Do we, do we know who was in charge of the MLK Parade?
I believe that Victor Taylor was, was the chairman of that group and there was a larger committee that was involved with that. Is he still here? Is he still?
Okay, so essentially, we're, we're not necessarily adding one, we're swapping the MLK Junior Parade for the Black History Month.
Correct.
Okay. Board, you have questions?
Well, this isn't really pertaining to the schedule we have right here, but you're, like you're saying, I'm, I'm going to be asking later on to add one, since we're taking off the Martin Luther King Jr. Parade. And it's basically, the charge will be the same as it would be for the other events here, for his barricades, policing, whatever, and fire, whatever is, is included, but I'll be asking for that late, at a date, later date.
Okay. Mr. Attorney, I'm, I'm assuming we can always put this on the agenda and make adjustments in the future?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any questions, board?
I make a motion that we adopt an ordinance to amend Section 66 through 85 for city-sponsored events.
Second. Have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Brinson.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Preel?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Item number 16, I do not see any appointments, did I miss one from anyone? If not, we will move on to item number 17, Attorney's Report.
Nothing important, Mayor.
Item number 18, City Manager's Report.
Few other items to update you on, City Hall projects. If you haven't noticed, quite busy at, at City Hall. We met with the contractors today regarding the elevator project, the estimated completion date is now June 10th and that includes some rain dates. They're hoping that the project will still be completed in May, but based on paperwork, it's going to be June 10th. The stairwell project that has been going on for several weeks, they completed the plaster work about a week ago and started tomorrow, they're going to start repainting the stairwell and then that project will be completed. Last week, the brick repointing project started, this was on the north side behind me, and, and it's been quite loud in, in mine and the assistant managers' offices and so it's, it's, the parking lot is currently closed off in the back, but staging will also begin tomorrow on the east side of the building where they'll start building scaffolding as they get ready to start grinding the, the mortar out of the joints on that side. So this project is still expected to take approximately six months to complete, they're going to grind everything out, then they're going to come back and re-mortar all of the joints in that. And they have found a lot of soft areas in the mortar, so that's interesting to note. Also on Pleasant Hill Community Center, we estimate that grand opening to be around the first of April, we should have a date sometime right after the first of March, so we'll inform everyone on that as we get a little bit closer to that. Want to remind everyone that the Resiliency Roadshow will be held on Thursday, February 16th and it's going to be open from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Omega Center. There will be presentations at 10:30 a.m. and 12:15 p.m. The public is invited to attend. While you're there, there will be listening sessions and opportunities to give feedback to our consultants and staff. Also, New Bern 101 will begin on Thursday, February 23rd at 4:00 p.m. This eight-session program exposes citizens that have an interest in learning more about the city of New Bern to find out about the various departments and how local government works. It's been a great program since we implemented this. The, for this program, we've got 20 people in that, so that it is full, so we are going to be having a fall program as well, but it's, it's really good and if, if anyone would like to participate in that, you can find out some more information on our website. That's all we have tonight, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Let's move on to new business, Alderman Preel?
I have a question, if you don't mind.
Sure.
The repointing project, did you say that's an additional six months? That was not the elevator, correct?
That's correct, that's correct, yes.
Okay. One more thing, Mr. Victor Taylor just walked in, did you need clarification about the Martin Luther King event?
Victor, did, did you and your group used to run the Martin Luther King Jr. Parade?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that was the only question we had, it, we, we added the, the Black History Month Parade as requested. Okay, Alderman Preel, new business?
Yes, I've got a couple of items, like to review with the board.
We received an email and a phone call today from a resident who is a member of the Sunnyside Neighbors Group. They've requested that myself and city staff meet with their neighborhood group on Saturday, March 3rd at 3:00 o'clock to address concerns in the Sunnyside neighborhood. I will be coordinating with Foster to kind of get that set up. Secondly, I have requested, and Foster has included on our upcoming work session meeting, an item to talk about reconstituting the Municipal Service District Advisory Board. And I think it's important that at this early stage in reviewing that, that we get the input of some of the MSD property owners to understand what they would like to see a reconstituted advisory board look like. So I would like to request that the city staff reach out to the MSD property owners, inviting them to attend the work session on the 27th to have an opportunity to offer input into that discussion. And if I need to make that my way of a motion, I will.
Mr. Davis, I don't know how many items we're going to have on that work session agenda. I think it's scheduled for four hours. Is that correct?
I believe it's three hours.
Three hours. Alderman Prell, are you asking to have public comment during that period?
On that particular item, yes. From the MSD property owners that choose to attend.
Okay, so the board would probably want to give some direction, because that could take an hour or two of the discussion, depending on how many people show up to discuss one item when there's multiple items on the agenda. So, I mean, I certainly have no issue if they want to be in attendance, and if they want to give us their input. I've already received some from some folks. One was a recommendation to basically mirror what Wilmington, North Carolina, has done, which I think is great. I'd sign off on that right now. So, I mean, we can also, while staff reaches out, everhow, you're going to do that. I assume you could pull the information from Alice's Gist Maps, and we could reach out to them somehow and let them know that they're free to email and contact us by phone or everhowever it's easier for them to give us their input as well, so we don't have... There's four pages on that spreadsheet we looked at, property owners, so.
Well, why don't we ask staff to put together a proposal on how such a committee should... what a committee would look like and present it to us?
So as part of that agenda item, we're going to give examples of what other MSDs are doing throughout the state, and you're going to see a good variety of things, and we will have some recommendations as well. And happy to get feedback from them also on that.
Could that be shared beforehand with those MSD property owners so they can have time to review that and provide feedback?
Sure.
I think Alderman Prell, I'm not going to speak for you, but I think the spirit of your comment was to allow those that are actually involved to have a say in how the board is structured, not staff. Is that...
I think it's important at the early stage of the discussion that we're going to have to at least solicit the input of the actual MSD property owners, just to understand what concerns, if any, they may have in terms of how the... an advisory board is going to be established. Again, Wilmington has a model that could be followed. Other business improvement districts around the state, I think, have established their advisory boards a little differently than Wilmington. Hopefully, Foster will be able to identify some of the different options at our meetings so that we can review that and discuss it. Again, hopefully get the input of the actual individuals that may end up being on the board prior to a formal decision being made. So in whatever way works best, I mean, I'm comfortable with if we don't want to invite them into the work session meeting, at least we need to get something out to them early on for their review.
Would it be, maybe that you could have a meeting with them and bring their concerns or their recommendations to this board?
At what point in time, I guess is my question.
Whenever it's time to establish this committee.
Before the work session, is that what you're saying?
I don't think... I mean, when's the work session?
27.
27. And I don't anticipate you're going to... You may give direction after that meeting for us to put it on a future agenda, so that way you can do whatever you like.
I think it'd be great if Alderman Prell worked with the members of the MSD, the people that pay the tax, make a recommendation, and come back to this board with their thoughts and concerns.
I agree.
I don't think that during a three-hour period that we have dedicated already and the agenda set already for the work session is going to work. I think that we're going to... I don't think we would have enough time to dedicate the need, you know, to discuss it with everybody that may want to talk. You may get every person, the property owner in the MSD district who wants to come and talk, which is fine. Which is, might be a better reason why you meet with them and bring back their concerns and recommendations.
Okay. Well, I'm not sure we got any resolution to that, but...
Well, I'll say this. I'm not in favor of a willy-nilly allowing anybody and everybody that's an MSD taxpayer to speak in our work session, because I think it's going to take time away from what our goal is to get things accomplished. That's me. Does anybody disagree? If you want to open it up and say you want to add public comment on the work session for this item, then we can certainly do that.
Well, I want to know, what does Alderman Prell want?
What I'm looking for is to get input from the MSD property owners early on in our deliberation. So whether that's at the meeting on the 27th, or if that's us reaching out to them with a proposal, I'm comfortable going whatever direction the board is comfortable moving in, as long as we are soliciting that input early on.
What I was alluding to was possibly after our work session? That's... I mean, we'd have more time to, you know, give to the subject. I feel like the mayor... I'm concurring with the mayor right now, because I think during this work session, I mean, we want to give citizens enough time to speak, and everybody want... we want everybody to be heard, so that's why I was suggesting after our workshop. Now, unless the board want to do something before, we have another meeting before the workshop.
I would concur with after the workshop also, because, I mean, the presentation I assume we're going to get is all these ideas, and then we and they would be allowed to pick and choose and modify and all of that. I think that would be the spirit of what you're going for, as opposed to walking into a blackboard session where, you know, we're just throwing out ideas.
And so Alderman, we're happy to do our presentation to the governing board during the work session, and then I can work with Alderman Prell, and we can have a meeting with members of the MSD that would like to attend and go over the same information and recommendations that the board has given us at the work session, and then take their recommendations as well, formulate whatever comes of that, and when the time is right, come back to the governing board to let you decide how you would like to implement this.
Deal with that?
I'm comfortable with that. That's fine. The next item I have, just to follow up to concerns that I had raised at our last regular meeting, that being two issues. One, the concern I expressed about the mayor's appointment of two residents to the Housing Authority, that those appointments were not made at a public meeting. I did a little bit of research following that concern being expressed, and I just very quickly want to take the board back to January of 2018, when the sitting board at that time approved a resolution to adopt rules of procedure of the Board of Alderman. And that was adopted unanimously by that board. In the rules of procedure, Rule 25 deals with appointments, and subsection A under appointments, the board may consider and make appointments to other bodies, including its own committees, if any, only in open session. So we have a rule since 2018 that is very specific that the board, and the mayor is a member of this board, is to only make appointments during an open session. So that procedure was not followed in the mayor's appointment of the most recent two members being appointed to the Housing Authority. I also expressed concern about the procedure that we were following, making appointments to the redevelopment commission. And under Rule 25, subsection 2, that outlines the selection process for individuals to be appointed to various boards and commissions. And let me just quickly review that. Individuals interested in applying for appointment shall submit a written application on a form provided by the city to the city clerk and available on the city's official website. The city clerk shall provide the board with written notification that vacancies exist on the various boards, commissions, and committees appointed by the board or its members. This notification, along with applications of interested citizens, shall be provided to the board at a regular meeting. So here again, we have a number of individuals who had expressed interest in being appointed to the redevelopment commission in this case. Not a single one of those individuals was, as far as I know, was asked to provide or to fill out an application form, which apparently we have, although I don't believe we're using it. That application form, and I haven't seen it, hopefully would spell out what that person's background and experience is. And then, once received by the city clerk, she would provide us with copies of that. And so that's another procedure that we have in place, but we're not following it. I would like to go a little bit farther under this subsection 2 and request that the board be given at a minimum two weeks' notice of, or at least a copy of, an application at least two weeks prior to an appointment being made, so that we have an opportunity to review the person's background and experience, and if we feel the need to possibly individually meet with the individual and talk to them, to satisfy ourselves that they would be a good fit for the need that we have. That's in addition to what I'm talking about. The primary concern, though, is that we have a document. It's rules and procedures, which we as a board are supposed to be following, but in two instances, very recently, we have deviated from the rules and are not following them. So there's a concern that I have that... Well, the concern is very simple. We're not following the rules that have been set up, and I would like to see that corrected moving forward. And I would like to see some further revisions made to the selection process so that we as board members have adequate time to review the applications being submitted by individuals so that we can make informed decisions at the time of making an appointment. And with that, I have nothing further.
Mr. Davis, could you clarify the difference in a unilateral mayor appointment versus a board appointment, please?
Yes, sir. Rule 25, as Alderman Prell points out, is simply a restatement of state law. The board cannot, can only take action in an open meeting. So when you appoint someone to serve on a public body, the law requires that you do that in an open meeting as a board, because it takes a majority of you to make the appointment.
Okay.
State statute with respect to housing authorities is specifically different. It's the only statute I'm aware of that specifically states that the mayor unilaterally makes an appointment to the housing board, not the board. So Rule 25 recovers board decisions and board appointments, but just because the mayor is on the board does not make it a board appointment. It's still the mayor's appointment. The mayor's perfectly free to make that appointment in an open meeting if he'd like to, also free to do it otherwise. Totally up to the mayor.
Well, I understand state statute, and the point that I'm making is not that the mayor does not have the authority. The mayor absolutely has the authority to make those appointments pursuant to state statute. And unless I've missed something, state statute does not get into the mechanics of how those appointments are to be made. It's silent on that issue. So I interpret it that we as a local governing body can make it more restrictive, but we're not... we can't make it less restrictive. So we cannot require board approval of the mayor's appointments. Can't do that. That's making... that's going totally the opposite direction. But given the fact that state statute is silent on the issue of the mechanics of how those appointments are made, I would think that the rule that we have would be applicable, because all we're saying is that all appointments should be made in a public meeting.
Yes, sir, and I appreciate the argument. I'm just stating to you that Rule 25 is intended to recite the state law, that the board must act in an open meeting to not violate the open meeting statutes when you make appointments. That's what I'm saying to you in Rule 25. The mayor, outside of that, the board can't constrain the mayor in the way that they would like him to make his appointment. The state statute gives him that authority. I'm not convinced that the board can make him do that in an open meeting if the board demanded it. But I appreciate what you're saying. It's a fine argument. But that rule is designed to simply restate the law, not to corner the mayor in making those appointments in an open meeting. Again, he's free to do that if he'd like.
Anything else?
No, I understand what the attorney is saying. I would urge Mayor Yu, as well as any future mayors, to simply make appointments during a public meeting. I'm not asking much. I'd be interested in the other board members as to how they feel about that.
I think our attorneys basically said it's not a board decision, so you all can state your opinion on whatever you'd like to. You're more than welcome to do that. It's free country. But until you want to try to make a motion to put that rule into place, the board can vote on it, and then the attorney can research it and find out if it's legal or not. Is that what you'd like to do?
Yes.
I've expressed what I'd like to do.
Is that a motion?
The way I interpret this rule is we already have it in place, because it refers to the board. You are a member of this board. Now, if the rest of the board members want to give you... Now, if the rest of the board members want to give you the authority to make appointments at any point in time, not at a public meeting, then maybe the board should vote to change the language here to make it very clear that the board does not include the mayor when it comes to the housing authority. I understand the city attorney's argument that this rule was based on, you know, that state statute. But there are other state statutes that address appointments to other boards and committees and commissions. So based on the attorney's argument, this language is inappropriate. It leaves it too, it leaves it wide open to interpretation. So maybe it needs to be correct.
Sir?
Sure.
Attorney Davis?
Yes, ma'am.
I understand where Alderman Prill is coming from for his procedure wise. So as a board with the general statute, we have a right to, as a board, as a mayor, we have a right to go in and revise these procedures, correct? To change them to what we want to change them to? When the general statute is saying one thing and we have a right to go in and change that?
There's two issues, and I don't want to conflate the two. The current rule is directed to the board, not a board member and not the mayor, but the board. So the current rule simply restates the state law that the board can only act in an open meeting with respect to appointments. The second question is, if the board demanded that the mayor make his unilateral appointment in an open meeting, is that, does the board have that authority to make the mayor do that? I am very doubtful the board has that authority.
Or is there something that you can proceed with finding out an answer to that?
If the board directed me to go do that, I'm happy to poke around and see what I can find. I'm not sure I'm going to find an answer on that, honestly. My instincts are that no one's ever called the question on that. And you've got a state statute says the mayor has the unilateral authority. I don't know what would stop him from exercising his authority, whether he wanted to do it before the meeting, during the meeting, or after the meeting. I don't know how you would stop him if he just said, "I'm going to do it this way."
Because you can't stop him. It's already automatically done.
That's the point. And again, just to be clear, too, the mayor is perfectly free to do it during the meeting if he'd like or not. It's entirely up to the mayor. And that's the way it's been done for decades.
Thank you.
I have my good favor, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Royal?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to just simply state how concerning it is for me to have so many residents that are so frustrated and disheartened. I know we said some time ago that we cannot please every person, but I believe that it is our responsibility as the governing body to have conversations that can help us bring some type of resolve to some of these issues that we're seeing. Someone brought up the term transparency. Transparency leads to trust. And I know that when we were all sworn in, that most of us said that we wanted to do something different. We wanted a board that our citizens could trust. We wanted a board that would bring some type of resolve. And I want us to, again, have some conversations as a board, to come together to see what we can do to actually address some of the issues. The organizational chart that I always refer to states that the citizens of New Bern governs the board, that the citizens of New Bern are at the top of the organizational chart, and that we all were elected by the citizens of our great city. I would like to see us again, I'm repeating this, but it is so concerning to me that as a board we come together, have some conversations among ourselves. Every voice has value, and you know how I feel about that. You know how I feel about community engagement. It provides common ground for citizens to work towards common goals. And to hear these residents tonight come in with so many issues. And I know that we can say it's not a city issue, but I'm telling you, if I were in your shoes, if I was experiencing what you're experiencing, I would definitely want someone somehow to help me, to buy a brand-new home and to see it flooded. And there's just so many concerns. And again, I urge us as a governing body that we have some conversations. I don't know in what setting, but I know it needs to be soon. And I know that it needs to focus on the residents of our city, meeting the needs of as many people as we can, hearing them out, and seeing what type of resolve we can come to as a governing body just to make sure that every voice has value and that we're doing all we can as a governing body in answering to the requests of our citizens. Thank you.
So Alderman Royal? All right. Alderman Kinsey?
Well, there's two sets of rules that we have here that the city attorney explained to the board and to others that is listening that one is set up by the state, one is given to you by the governor to elect people to another outside board. And that's something that you have done. And from my understanding of the rules and regulations, you exercise your rights to do that. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So from what the rules said, you haven't done anything wrong. So I'm trying to make sure that I'm understanding the rules here, how we should follow them. So Scott?
Yes, sir.
So the two rules that we have, we have one just for the board.
Yes, sir.
Right?
Yes, sir.
Any appointment is made is through the board.
Yes, sir.
And the mayor. But also, there's another set of rules that he has to go by that is set up with another set of rules that he does not have to come before the board to appoint anyone to the Housing Authority board. And that's the only board that he's allowed to do that.
Yes, sir. It's not board action.
I'm trying to make sure. He hasn't done anything wrong, has he not? Has he followed everything correctly?
Yes, sir. In my view, yes, sir.
Okay. So it's no need to waste all that time to go research something that you can come back with an answer that we already know based on what the rules has been before us. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, thank you. I just want to make sure I have a clear understanding. You know, and then another thing, I'm sorry about what has happened to you guys tonight. That's not a city issue. My heart goes out to you as well that you will probably have to look into legal counsel to further the things that you're looking to do with this contract or whatever happened there. We have sent out, from what the city manager said, that our hands are tied. We can't go into that situation there. But with you seeking legal counsel, they should be able to put you in the right directions to help you out with your situation. There's some things we can do, some things we can't. But we try to do everything right that I know. I try, I follow the rules. I make sure I go straight to the city attorney and the manager to make sure I understand that I get the facts right, where I can base everything with facts. Because at the end of the day, people will bring you all kinds of wrong information about different things. And they'll keep you running in a circle when you just have to make one phone call and stand up and do what is right the first time to keep from wasting all that time going here, asking that person or listening to another person because they're not going to bring you the facts. You can't put your emotions in it. Stick to the facts. Do what is right. It may cost a little money, but it's costing money anyway. So go ahead and do the right thing. That is my point in case tonight.
Okay. Alderman Bass?
I have no problem with the way that the appointments are made to the Housing Authority by the mayor, but I do have a problem, and I expressed it to the mayor at our last meeting, that as, I'm going to speak for myself, as a board member, I would like to be able to present citizens' names to the mayor to take under advisement, to look at their application, to be selected and appointed to the board, to the Housing Authority. I just feel that as a board member, I would like to have that right to submit my citizens' names that have an interest. I know we get attacked all the time about transparency. I'm all about transparency. I mean, just because I sit up here with this board, I'm a part of this board, don't mean that I'm going to sit up here and do something that I know that is not right because I have to work with my colleagues. No, that's not me. I'm not going to do something that I know that is not right from the beginning. So I am, as Ms. Barbara Sampson said, I am one of those that I feel like I be transparent. And moving forward, when it comes to transparency, and we use that word, transparency, I'm not a lawyer. I sit up here, if I have a question, a problem, we discuss something, I'm clear with it, I'm going to direct my questions for an answer to our attorney Davis. That's what he's here for. He's our legal counsel. So I have to judge, I have to make decisions for our citizens, along with this board, based on what the city attorney, the advice that he gives me. So it's a really, really terrible situation that we sit up here and we listen to all the comments. We listen to all the ridicule and all of this. But it's a big decision that we have to make. And like I said, I'm just going to base mine on the advice I get from the city attorney. Because I'm the first to say, don't care who knows, this is a learning experience. And anybody who sits up here in this seat, this is a learning experience. You don't know everything. But now, I do want to comment also on the Adams. I just feel that if we have developers that come into our city and develop subdivisions, that there should be something that we as a city, we can hold those developers to. I just feel that we need to do a better job of that. It's just like with our city streets and roads or whatever. We hold the developers, we don't sign off on contracts for those streets until we know that those streets are 100% correct. So I think that we need to do, as a board, we need to dabble deeper. We need to see what we need to do to hold these developers accountable. And I also would like to ask you, Mayor Odom, if you, because I've had some questions, had some calls, and can you explain the process? Because a lot of our citizens are saying that they're not, they're feeling left out and they don't know what happens after we go into a closed session and come out of that closed session. They're not aware of what's going on. And decisions are being made after we come out of that closed session. So this is something that if you could explain that a little later on when you give your comments of how that process is handled, I would appreciate it. Do you need to?
I'm going to, I'll try to explain it now. I'll probably defer to staff on that. But obviously, the cameras are on while we're in an open session. The clerk records everything from an audio transcribing standpoint. That gets translated into the minutes, which we all approve. When the board goes into closed session, I'm going to say, staff, correct me, I'm going to say 99% of the time when we come out, we don't take action. Usually, it's something that's given direction in closed session because you really can't take a vote in closed session. I think what you're referring to is the last closed session we had.
No, excuse me, interject. I'm not speaking of how we handle our business in the closed session when we come back into open session. We come back, after we come out of a closed session, we come back in, we open up the doors to see if any citizens are here. That's the process. The citizens are wanting to know why are they not involved in coming back in?
Sure. Oh, yeah. Well, I meant, we're going to have a closed session tonight. So all of you are more than welcome to sit out there in the foyer until we get through deliberating. If it's 30 minutes or three hours, the doors get opened back up. Everybody can come back in if you're here, including the media. Used to, when we had a media represented from Sun Journal, they would usually hang around and come back in. And then whatever happens, the audio recording starts again, correct, Ms. Clerk? And then the board either takes action or adjourns.
Thank you. Did I see it? That's what I wanted.
And the action taken will, of course, be in the minutes.
Correct.
Thank you, sir, for that.
Sure.
I think I have one other thing. Oh, I wanted to know when will we be bringing back to the board? We had our last discussion on the ETJ, and I didn't know. I know that our attorney Davis, there was some issues and concerns that we had to take a deeper dive into and look into. But when would that, do you have any idea, Mayor or attorney Davis, when we'll be bringing that back as an agenda item so that we can have that discussion and get the citizens that live within that ETJ, you know, make a decision, whatever, whichever way we're going to go?
So Alderman Bass, what I can tell you about that is that is going to be one of the topics at the work session that's coming up on the 27th.
All right. Thank you, sir. Oh, yes. And also, I would like to, Ms. Talina Massey of Juneteenth would like to come back before the board and give a recap of Juneteenth last year. And I just want to make sure, and possibly if that can be put on the agenda so she can come and do a presentation on March, the March 28, 2023 meeting.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion, please.
Do we have a second? Have a motion and a second. Does everyone understand the motion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
And, yes, one last thing. City attorney, I mean, city manager and you, Mayor. Where is my Valentine? May and Ms. Royal don't have a Valentine? The city clerk don't have a Valentine? The finance director don't have a Valentine? What? Where's our Valentine?
All I can say, I'm busted for the Christmas without the poinsettia. Now I'm busted for the Valentine. So I apologize and won't happen again.
You know, us girls, we like, us girls, we like gifts.
I'm not sure we can give and receive gifts, remember? There's all kinds of conclusions around that.
We like gifts. But that's it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Alderman Britson?
Yes. I'm trying to decide whether I want to address some of the topics we've talked about tonight. I think the one that I will address is, it's one of the, when we're talking about developers, to me, one of the symptoms we have is we as a city need to decide whether we are going to continue a structure of maintenance. We had issues addressed with Riverside about maintaining those areas. Or are we going to restructure and manage our growth and maintain? So what am I talking about? Well, I don't think within our, and staff can correct me, you know, I don't... Well, I don't think within our, and staff can correct me, you know, I don't know everything, just like you're talking about. I don't think we have the engineering expertise to look at plans, to look at traffic studies, to look at grading, to look at all of these things. And, and for the sheer fact of the volume that we have now. And so, you know, that's a discussion, obviously, for budget to come. But I think it's a symptom of the issues we're having with developers, that the city probably doesn't have the capacity, much less the ordinances, to work on that sheer volume of developers that are here. So I think that's something probably to discuss during the budget. Because I know, I've been told at least, they're probably gonna contract out for some of those services. And my thought process is we need to start thinking about whether we bring that in-house so that we have to deal with the developers. That's all I'll say about that because the next thing I want to talk about is I attended, or I watched the last county commissioner meeting. And so the county tax office, we haven't talked about revaluations here at all, so I'm gonna put it out here. The county tax office will mail property revaluations on February 27 and expect them to hit your post office boxes around March 1st. They will also post the revaluations on GIS February 28th. What does that mean to you? Well, the revaluation is the tax assessed value of your property. We use that to determine how much taxes you're gonna pay. Every property is evaluated separately, so your individual property may go up, may stay the same, may go down. However, I want to caveat that with each property is evaluated separately. But what the county, the countywide average property value has gone up 36.11% since the last revaluation in 2016. 36%. Now, what the county and the city does with the tax rate is actually gonna determine what your tax bill is gonna be. But the basis is gonna be your revaluation that's coming out. I fully expect, I can, I'll say this now, I, I fully expect both to lower the tax rates, but to what extent, that's still to be determined. The city and county will set a new tax rate by one July because that's following our budget process. I expect our budget work session starts in March or April. Somewhere in there. But it will be May? Okay, so it starts in May. So that's when you need to start talking to us about taxes. But I didn't want it to be a shock when you get your revaluation notes. However, if you're more, if you're interested in more details on revaluation, the county will have a detailed update during their February 20th meeting. That's at 08:30 at the county building. But just like us, they broadcast their meetings live on YouTube and they're also archived there. So while we do Facebook and Roku, they use YouTube. So if you just search Craven County Board of Commissioners, you can look up their meetings there. But again, they'll have a detailed meeting going through revaluation on February 20th. And next topic is at the January 26 meeting at the New Bern Metropolitan Planning Organization, we approved flashing lights at the intersection of MLK and Highway 17 with Trent Creek Road and Bendy Quinn Elementary School. These flashing lights will give drivers more warning when the light's turning red, similar to the ones that are on US 70. And hopefully this will prevent accidents like the ones we had last year involving a school bus. So I wanted to let citizens know that we are taking reactive measure in this case, but we are trying to improve safety. And then the last thing I wanted to mention, I, I didn't realize the work session agenda was already set, but what I am, I get what Alderman Astor said. I wanted to follow through with the, at the special session, I talked about having a downtown advisory council separate from the MSD. I would like to talk about that at the work session because I think that kind of goes hand in hand with the MSD. But my thought process is I'll get with Alderman Prill and with the city manager and put together some sort of proposal to discuss. We don't have to adopt it. That's not what I'm looking for. But basically have the discussion for a downtown advisory council. And the reason why it'd be separate from MSD is, you know, our residents and our businesses aren't necessarily the property owners. But the, this downtown advisory council idea that I would be proposing would handle some of the issues of downtown, like the street cafes. Should we still have them? Should we modify them? Should we get rid of them? And then as you heard tonight about a social district, should we have one at all? And if we should have one, then what should it look like? But basically that advisory council would be a work group in and of itself to develop proposals and present it to the board of Alderman rather than just kicking things around. That's all I have.
Thank you, Alderman Britson. I'll, I'll make a couple of comments on what you just mentioned. City attorney, when, when we have a advisory council, that is an official board, if you will, they're required to post their meetings. They have all those different statutory requirements. Minutes have to be taken. They have to be available. Is that correct?
Yeah, yes, sir. And you would want to appoint a city staff person to be that liaison just for that reason, because we gotta check all the legal boxes, that the notices are properly given, that minutes are properly kept and recorded, because the city is gonna forever own that liability and responsibility to comply.
If it is a working group, it can be 50 people.
Right.
And they can meet informally wherever they want to meet, make those recommendations to us. So that's kind of the difference in an advisory council and a, a working group.
That's right.
So what we have now from an MSD perspective is a working group because it's informal. And I think what Alderman Prill's been proposing is a formal MSD council where what I just mentioned previously would all be handled that way, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Last comment I want to make, if you could just give us a reminder, when it comes to communicating, when we talk about transparency, I think it's important that the board be reminded that we should not be conducting business via email with reply all. When you get an email from a city staff member or another board member, please do not click reply all and share information. It's one thing to say, great job. It's another one to say, you know, I want to talk about this at the next meeting. Those two have different legal ramifications. So just a reminder for everyone when it comes to that. So do we need a closed session tonight?
Yes, sir. Pursuant to 143, 311A5 to discuss the potential acquisition of real property.
Alderman Kinsey, did you have something else?
Yes, I have something. We have a, I have a special guest with me tonight and I would like to tell her happy Valentine's. And that is my fiancee. So I'd like to say hello again and happy Valentine's to you and many more.
You can tell who's not married on the board, but they're the only ones that thought to wish their significant other a happy Valentine's Day. So happy Valentine's Day to you. Thanks for the reminder.
Mayor, I would like to make one comment. The, the agenda for the work session is not set yet. We sent some information out in a newsletter, the weekly report several weeks ago and listed some things. And we're still taking items. If any of you have any other things you'd like to talk about, we'll definitely put them on the list. It'll be similar to the, the last meeting. We're gonna go until, until we run out of time on things. So, and I'm taking note of, of, of what the board said tonight.
Just a reminder, we need a closed session. The attorney stated the statutes. I need a motion and a second, please.
Some more?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of going to closed session, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We are now in closed session. If the
Did she get it?
Okay, we are back in, we are back in open session. Is there any more business that will come before the city of New Bern tonight?
Motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.